Because neither our board president or vice president could join us this evening. So the first order of business is to ask for someone to make a nomination, Mrs. Slack.
I nominate Mrs. Frederico.
Second?
And we have a second. Any discussion? Any other nominations?
You want to do it?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Mrs. Frederico, the seat is all yours. Please do.
Hot seat. Okay. Would you all rise for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our first order of business is always a happy one. Could we have our student?
Hello. So I have a lot on my agenda today. I'll try to make it quick. Today is World Autism Day, in which our school participated in, so that's why I'm wearing blue. Normally I would change, but I don't have any other blue, so I wanted to keep this on. Student government elections will start tomorrow, and I will be picking up a packet to run for student government president, as well as Shashank Shankshabag. Aligned students went to Washington as their field trip of the year, and third quarter will end this Friday, so everyone's trying to get all their grades and stuff in, as well exams are coming up, and the first ACT was during this week, so people are starting to study for those a lot. Class of 2020 had their fundraiser, because they need money, and which we are going to donate to them for our next year, because we have a lot saved up for the class of 2020, so we're going to give a lot of our rest of our money to them. Senior shirt votes went out as well, and our chaperones for prom have been picked, which is 10 teachers in the school building. This is very interesting, and I like this one. Muslim Club this Friday is offering a defense class. Mr. Ingle, our officer here, is going to teach it for all of fourth block, and I think maybe after school as well, and I will be attending, as well as teachers' classes as well. The deserving mentor nominations went out during this week, as well as the library's having an art show, and people were nominated for that as well. Training for the eighth graders start Monday for their field trip of touring the school. And the first track meet was last week, and each, I don't know how many Wednesdays came in, but I know that the boys and the girls both had at least one win, so that's good for them. And the cultural fair is in within two weeks, so everyone's getting that together, International Club, and working on that, as well as our field trip for the year. And that's all I have.
Thank you.
Very busy.
Can I ask a question about the cultural fair?
Sure.
Do you know the start and end time of that? I know it'll probably be like, you know, a large.
The cultural fair is on the 18th. I think it starts first block and goes to like fourth block, and we are having the elementary come as well for visitors, so we're going to have like games and stuff for them as well. There's going to be a lot of entertainment there, so it'd be nice if you guys could come as well.
Yeah, so it's a morning event.
Well, it's all day.
It's all day.
All day, yeah. All day.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Okay, the purpose of our meeting tonight is to get more ideas on the budget and up-to-date state information. So do you want to start?
Sure. Actually, I'm probably going to hand things off to Neil Sanders. As you know, the state actually adopted a budget within the stroke of midnight on April, on March 31st, and because of that, we have some additional information about state aid, and we have some other information about our tax levy limit calculation. So I think what I'll do is hand things to Neil to update us on our revenue changes, and then we can go from there.
Stockwiles indicated that the state budget was settled over the weekend. We did get runs on Sunday afternoon, so we do have the information now of what that means for our school districts, while I've run through some of the changes. In terms of foundation aid, and that's that basic education aid that we get for every child, that increased under the settled budget, seventy-four thousand nine hundred and three dollars. We did get a couple of minor adjustments to aid, so the hardware and technology category, we received an additional fourteen dollars. Textbook, software, and library, though, that was a decrease of four thousand five hundred and twenty-two dollars. So it's the state, state is using information that's submitted by districts over the course of the year, and they draw from different databases, so those could be some of the adjustments between databases that caused those numbers to change. And then the final category that we received in addition in aid was BOC's aid. That was an addition of thirty-seven thousand eight hundred and eighty dollars. So in total, from the superintendent's budget till now, we have an increase in overall state aid of a hundred and eight thousand two hundred and seventy-four dollars. So that's been reflected in the information that's been presented to you. In addition to that, we do have a couple other adjustments since, again, the superintendent's budget was released. As you know, we rent classrooms to BOC's. We have those in four schools. There's various number of classrooms that are rented to the BOC's special education program. We did hear from BOC's, and at this point in the year, they're doing much the same thing that we are. They're reaching out to schools, trying to figure out how many students are going to be coming, what programs they're going to offer, how many classrooms they actually need throughout the capital region and other places to support the classes and the students that they anticipate having. What they've told us is that they will need one less classroom in our district next year, so we'll end up going from thirteen to twelve. So that's a loss in revenue of twenty-six thousand two hundred and fifty dollars, so we did have accounted for that in this version that you have before you. In addition, we have a couple other expenditure adjustments. We are now sharing a greater portion of our school resource officer with the town. We didn't have from information when we went to trust with the original budget. We've since learned from the town how they're calculating that cost-sharing agreement. We were higher, so we're reducing that, twenty-four thousand nine hundred and eighty-five dollars, basically. We included benefits. They are not including benefits in the cost-sharing ratio. And then finally, we have an addition of fourteen thousand one hundred and twenty dollars related to buying BOC's science kits, and I'll let Damian talk to that briefly.
Okay, so starting this year, we started to phase in a new science program, essentially. We had formerly been using something called the Science and Technology for Children program, which was developed years ago. It was supported by BOC's, still is supported by BOC's, but as the next-generation science standards have come into play, we're really trying to strengthen and improve and realign our elementary science program to these new standards and to introduce some new units of study. So we started this year phasing in some of their, developed by the Smithsonian Institute, so we started phasing in some of the units that were developed by the Smithsonian this year. We had many teachers in the year prior to that. They served as pilot teachers, and actually, two years prior to that, we had teachers serve as pilot teachers who were actually contributing to the development of the program. So we have quite a bit of experience with these programs. As BOC starts to introduce these new units as part of their service, they have some startup expenditures, as you might imagine, to acquire the materials and get everything in place so they can support school districts. We are not the only district in the region that will be doing this. We're in fact trying to align our work with Bethlehem, so if we can have districts doing a similar thing, then you can actually share the service and make it a little bit less expensive, but there is definitely a little bit of a startup cost, so we have some new figures that we received from BOC's a couple of weeks ago, and that reflects the fourteen thousand dollar difference that you see there.
So overall, what we have are total adjustments to revenue and additional eighty-two thousand twenty-four dollars. In terms of expense, we have a reduction of ten thousand eight hundred and sixty-five dollars. The other piece that correlates to that, as well as a change in our tax levy limit threshold, and that's the calculation that we have to do every year that tells us what the threshold is for a simple majority vote, fifty percent, or supermajority vote, sixty percent. We were under the tax levy limit threshold with superintendent's budget. That has grown, though. We're farther under. What it is is related to the rate on mitigation project we're doing at the high school this summer, so we applied for that. It's a health and safety project, but we're trying to see if we can get it through SCD so we can do the work this summer when the building's not occupied by students. We really need to get that work done during that timeframe. So there was a question about whether the state would approve that in the timeframe that we needed. So we just heard recently, everything was submitted, fast-tracked, if you will. We did get approval on that. What that means is that falls under the capital exclusion exemption in the calculation for the tax levy limit threshold, so that actually increases our tax levy limit threshold because it's excluded, so there's another hundred and thirty thousand dollars there, so we have increased our tax levy limit threshold. So with all of those changes included now, we are, with this proposal, two hundred and forty-two thousand four hundred and twenty-five dollars below the tax levy limit threshold. So that has increased substantially. It's increased by a hundred and thirty thousand dollars from what it was before. And then what we've also included on this sheet, or some of the options that Dr. Wiles included in her budget presentation when we released the budget, of some things that if more money became available, things that we would consider or have on our list as priorities, literacy lessons, that would be for elementary, special education teachers to provide reading instruction. We have a cost of fifty-seven thousand dollars for that. We did talk about Tech Valley High School, some additional slots or tuitions. They're fifteen thousand, fifteen dollars apiece. We also had on the list high school and middle school furniture replacement, and these are classroom desks and cafeteria tables. That's a total of five thousand dollars. Another item was reducing the use of fund balances as a revenue source. And then finally, we talked about district visioning, some process to assist the district with creating a vision for the work that we did. And summarize this, changes on the worksheet.
Okay, I think the thing we could do now is basically get your thoughts as to what Neil's presented.
Maybe we could have Gloria, Sean was going to explain the visioning, first of all, because that would be something that not everybody knows.
Ben is on the committee as well, so feel free to jump in. We, the communications committee met on Monday, knowing that we were kind of under this deadline, and we have been talking about how to proceed with strategic planning, and we've been doing that all year. We finally set a deadline, and we said we have to come up with our recommendations. So that's what we did on Monday, so, and Sean will be here at some point, we hope, but it might be a good idea for us to understand what we would like to recommend tonight. I think the committee as a whole agreed that we need to have a plan in place, a strategic plan with mission goals, objectives. It was high on the priority of just about every board member when we did that survey in December, so we felt that that would help us, help us not only throughout the year, but setting up capital projects, future budgets, and whatever, so we all agreed to that, and that it was a high priority. Ben had some concerns about, you know, having a plan that's too rigid, and we all agreed that it has to be an organic type of a thing, that has to grow as our understanding and vision, you know, and it grows and changes or whatever, and we find things that need to be tweaked or whatever, so we wanted to make sure that we could work in that direction to have something that was more of an organic type of thing, and taking more of a big-picture approach, not, you know, mini-school, you know, getting into the micromanaging of how programs run, but really setting direction, pointing the way. We reviewed a number of strategic plans that Damian had shared with us. Some of us had seen them before. We were impressed with the Greek Central Schools plan because of the way it was laid out, very simple, and then came up with their, you know, plan was a one-page direction kind of a thing.
What central school district was that?
Greece.
Greece?
Yeah, it's in, near Rochester, so western part of the state. Then we discussed how to best fund this. We were fortunate to have Neil at the meeting, so he was able to give us some input as to what might be available to us, you know, with a little bit more room under the tax cap and that kind of a thing. So we came to the, to the understanding that what we needed was to have a guide for this. This is not something we would just sit down and try to do ourselves. This was something that we wanted kind of stakeholders involved. We didn't want to just the board sit in a room, or administrators sit in a room and come up with this plan, that this had to be something, we really felt it had to be something that had to be built, using all the stakeholders, from parents to community members, students, staff, that we all build this direction, and we build this map together. And we were very comfortable working with Mr. Hendricks this year. The few times he's worked with us, we felt that his experience in doing this with public schools in the area, he's very familiar, he's actively worked with strategic planning with BOC's, we felt very comfortable with him. We, you know, we thought that if we could reach out to him to help us with this, that would be something. So our recommendation tonight is that the board put as part of the budget that designate about forty thousand dollars to be put on that line, that we could use during the next year to build this and to put the strategic planning in place that we've been talking about for a number of years.
Ben, do you want to add to that?
No.
Okay.
Judy's on the committee, too.
Yeah, I just, we had several different people or organizations that sent us information, and some of them just didn't work, some of them, or one of them was wildly expensive, and we just all felt comfortable that Robert knew us and knew what we needed, and he would probably be the best fit, and his price was reasonable for this sort of thing.
Can I ask what that money was budgeted to do? Like, what's forty thousand dollars going to go towards?
Yeah, I don't have the, you don't have the plan. No, it's not, it's all the steps. It's a whole series of steps that he'd lead us through. It was about a year of time of Robert coming in to work with various groups of, with the board, community groups, faculty, so it's his time and planning around all of that. The other piece that he does quite a bit is, two things actually. One is a lot of survey work to reach out to the community, to seek input on priorities and perceptions and those kinds of things. He does a lot of work with video as well, and incorporates that into the actual plan to help communicate it back out to the community. So it's consulting time.
Could we utilize that thought exchange?
I think we should be using that along with, with him, and since, I mean, the proposal that he submitted was now a couple years ago, so we probably would want to go back and talk with him again to say, what exactly should this look like now? And we have this new tool, can you incorporate this instead of doing some other kinds of things? So, I mean, I think we'd need to sit down with him and make a plan for how we're going to make our plan, but because of the timeline, we've basically just based on.
We wanted to make sure we had some money designated.
It's not just working with the board, you know.
It's the whole community.
It's a community involvement, so it's a lot of meetings that aren't just coming to us, it's also pulling in other people and meeting with them. I mean, if we thought it was just meeting with us, that would be very steep, but it's not. It's a much bigger picture than that.
I don't know. I think it's important. I think that the school district needs a vision, and needs to know where we're headed, not only for, you know, six months from now, but two years from now, four years from now, ten years from now. I guess I would just want a little bit more detail as to what forty thousand dollars gets us. I just think it's a, it's a large chunk of money.
Well, we had one plan, it was a hundred and ninety-nine thousand. You could come, they range in crazy.
That's two playgrounds.
It's crazy. It is crazy, but it's.
Okay. So I, I'm definitely interested. I think it's something that we do need to budget. I just, I guess I wouldn't want a little more clarification as to what that is.
And I'm sure we're going to want that, too, when we sit down with Robert.
It's a lot of money to kind of put in a line item, and I think the whole thought exchange is wonderful, just because it does get the community involved. I do worry about allocating money for people to come. Maybe, I'm guessing that forty thousand dollars would include him doing a presentation for the community to say, you know, can we get some insight from community members as to what they want, which I think is scary to me, because you don't know what kind of response you're going to get from community. You've done budget things at the library where there's 10 people that show up, so I don't want to throw money away for his time when a very minute amount of our population is going to go actually partake in that, whereas the thought exchange is already a done deal, and you can get insight that way.
So, we haven't had this conversation with him, but I know that when he has worked with other school districts, he has encouraged them to have those events by invitation. So we invite 100 people, and 100 people come, and frankly, we did that. When we had our kind of Future of Gilderlin Schools workshop back in 2014, and we invited, by letter, like 110 people, and we had about 90 show up at Tech Valley High School. So that strategy actually does seem to work, and that you get an invitation in the mail, and it's different than getting an SNN saying, "Everybody come." The other thing that I would suggest is that we do a thought exchange prior to that meeting, and you have a lot of data there to begin the conversation, rather than getting 100 people in the room and starting from scratch. That way, you actually have the 100 people in the room, and maybe 800 people more who completed our thought exchange. So there's, I think we need to think. And I think we felt, you know, as a group, that we felt, you know, we are very fortunate in this community. We have people, community members, that are extremely involved and interested in what we're doing. You know, this is not an apathetic community, and that's a plus. And we have an opportunity here to have a facilitator build on that and get people involved in a positive way to help us move forward. I think that's a great thing to be able to point to.
Sure.
Now, there's four or five other items on the list. Anybody want to speak to any of those? And that was the literacy lessons, elementary, special ed, teacher reading instruction, Tech Valley, additional slots, furniture replacement, Gilderlin High School and Farnsworth Middle School, and reduce the use of fund balances as a revenue source, which I know Ben was concerned about last time.
Well, yeah, go ahead.
I was just going to talk about the Tech Valley, because I think that's obviously been very important over the past few years, especially more so now it's been spoken about. I just don't know, you know, what, I know it says TBD, I'm guessing because we don't know how many slots that we want to allocate. Fifteen thousand, basically, a student. But I agree that there should be more monies put towards that. I just don't know what that magic number is. Is that two additional students? Is that three additional students?
Well, one of the problems, I think, I think Marie said yesterday at some point, is that it's not just fifteen thousand this year, it's four years worth.
You have to pay for the three years after.
And to put that expense in now is going to, you know, if we put in three students, that would be a huge amount of money over the course of the four years.
Of the four years.
And so it's not a one-time, if it were a one-time thing, I would say definitely, because it is so much, I think that makes it tougher to.
Yep. And does that mean three years every year that you're going to allow?
Yeah, more kids, but each year we have to pay for those three more kids, so that's, if it were three, it'd be another forty-five thousand.
And just to reiterate, it was, we have one child through lottery that goes, how many?
One per year.
Per year, yeah.
Starting in ninth grade, and then they continue on.
Right. So every year, we have four students? We have?
Roughly. I mean, we've had, we have a, we have a student who moved into the district, who was already attending Tech Valley, so we let the student stay. One year, they were having a buy-one-get-one-free tuition sale, which we took. So we, we've had kind of odd number variations on our one-per-grade.
Of what we're paying for.
But we, every year, select one eighth grader going into ninth grader. In some years, we have many applicants, like this year, we had 12. Other years, we only have one or two, so you can't even predict.
What you're going to get.
The level of interest.
I would love to be able to do that, but I, looking at the big picture and fearing for what's going to happen in the next few years, I'm concerned about that amount of money that we're then, you know, committed to paying. It's another teaching assistant, or, you know, over the course of the life of that, or something, you know, it's not quite a teacher, but it is a considerable amount of money.
One thing to remember is it does generate aid the following year.
Okay.
So there is some cost offset in the subsequent years, but to add more for next year, you just pay upfront. Yeah. And the original intent of this whole thing was to, to build a place where, you know, techniques could be experimented with, you know, different teaching strategies, and then information would be fed back to the schools that were participating. And I think, rather than looking for slots, I would like to see us push that. You know, there are some great things going on, and that we should be bringing those things back to our classrooms, so that it affects all our students and not just the few. And when that is in place, I would feel more comfortable, but I don't feel that that's happening yet, and I know there's probably a zillion reasons why, but I think if that's something we could kind of hone in on and say, you know, we want the things that are being successful, and the strategies that are working, and putting our teachers, giving them those kinds of skills and strategies, so that they can bring them here, and we can do them with all our kids.
Well, I think the biggest draw there, too, is that you're, you're getting a smaller classroom setting. I mean, that's one of the biggest draws that I've heard about. It's not only, it's the whole package. It's how they teach, it's what they're teaching, and it's, the ratio is not the same as what you can offer at a public school. Is there any way to do, I was thinking about this, is there any way to do, and I don't know how you go about doing it, but like a scholarship or grant, so that students that really want to go, if their parents could afford to send them, that they could pay a portion of it, and we cover a portion of it, and do something along those lines?
We've had many parents ask that question. It's simply not allowed under the law.
Really?
Yeah.
It may be. Because it is a hefty price. I mean, fifteen thousand.
Times four years.
It's fifteen thousand of the current year, but then how much of that do we get back the following year?
Sixty percent.
Sixty percent.
Each year, the following years?
Yeah, but that's still, it's a long-term investment that we can't be sure we can, you know, as I say, in three years, who knows what the legislature is going to do.
Yeah, what would happen if, say, times are tough, and two years from now, the funding that we get is not substantial enough to sustain the program? Do you have to continue to fund that?
We're not obligated.
Know what happens?
We're not obligated to.
So what would happen to those students that are there that you can no longer fund? That's probably why we continue.
Well, we might, we might want to, you know, phase out, so if we have students who are in, you know, in the program, we let them finish, like we would do for students who are studying, you know, a language. If we were going to discontinue the language, we would let the students in the pipeline finish the sequence.
But you couldn't have any further students go, if that was the case?
No.
I would love to be able to send kids there, but I just, the idea of the future, of our money being available is just, I don't, I don't think I could do it. And I listen to those parents, and I know how desperately they wanted to have it done, but it's a huge commitment.
I'd also, oh, go ahead, Ben.
Yeah, just to echo Gloria's points, you know, Tech Valley is the school of the future, you know, or further into the future than we are, you know, but instead of busing our kids there, let's, for the other 4,800 kids in our district, try to go further into the future. So, you know, I would want my kids to go to Tech Valley, you know, but my point is that we're serving 4,800 kids, you know, so let's, let's, you know, let's use this money for our, those, you know, for us.
You know what I would find very interesting, and I don't know if it's possible, we now probably have, I'm guessing, eight or nine graduates from that program? Is it possible to have them present to us at some point what their experience was there, and did they find it beneficial? What did they go on to do, you know, in their collegiate life, if they went on to college or whatever?
We did. I don't know if you recall this, but years ago, when Tech Valley was first starting up, the principal at the time, who was since moved on, came with a group of students, and they gave a presentation to the board. I am pretty sure they would welcome the opportunity to do something like that as well.
I'd like to see what our students, you know, how they feel that they have benefited in, but, you know, maybe sometime over the course of the next year, we could. and, but, you know, maybe sometime over the course of the next year, we could, I'd find it fascinating to see, you know, how successful they were, what they liked about it, what they didn't like about it and those types of things.
What they went on to do.
Yeah, yeah. Any other thoughts? Tim?
Can I just ask a couple of questions about some lines in the budget itself?
You can ask whatever you want.
On page 22, I was just curious where, it's 449, 2110, 449, there's a $39,750 increase and I was just wondering if that's because of that resource officer on that line and is that, is that factored in that sharing approach that's going on with the Gilderlin Police for that? Or am I way off course?
Page 22, did you say, Tim?
Tim, repeat your page and-
Page 22, it's kind of right in the middle, 2110, 449. It's Assemblies, Professional Services, and there was that resource officer.
It's further in there.
So, it's increased and I guess my question was, is that because of the resource officer and that sharing plan that we have with the police, which is a good one?
So, who has the resource officer listed?
We're seeing it increase by 24, 985, so-
I've got 39, 750.
And 39, 750 is what's on here, but on the new sheet, it shows going up 24, 985.
I think that is that.
So, is that like a portion, maybe? A portion of that 39?
Yeah.
Is that 24?
Okay.
Yes.
Because we didn't have the right figures then.
Right.
We didn't have the final figures then.
There is still that increase there, though. That increase is correct.
School resource officer is factored into that, yes.
Okay, all right.
What are the other, what's the other 15 of that? Because it's a multiple, you have Cultural Arts, Assemblies, Other Professional Services, and the Resource Officer.
Don't have that level of detail right here, so I might be able to come up with that in a few minutes.
I need it now, Neil, now.
I think it's just the title of the line.
The line, yeah.
As opposed to items.
So, nothing else goes into that?
Yeah, that's a combination of those types of items that wouldn't be represented in that code, that you're asking specifically about the dollar.
Because the Resource Officer, I'm just assuming, which I know I shouldn't ever do, but of the 39, 750, I'm guessing the 24, 985 is part of that, but then there's additional monies that were going up 39,000.
I know graduation expenses, a portion of that's in here. I'll look up the detail and I can get a better answer.
And then I had a second question on the next page, on page 23, line 2110, 490. And I was just curious, because that's a line for BOSI's Science Program Materials and the increase is 49,341. Does that include the 14,120 for the science kits?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. All right, thanks.
Anybody else? Gloria?
I'm just kind of concerned that we don't get in this mode, sometimes we do in this kind of a meeting, that because we, you know, the money has changed a little bit and then we have this list of things that we just start, you know, that has to be, I think we need to keep that frame in mind of what the community has said to us, that, you know, that they're concerned about expenditures. We need to keep that in mind. We have to put in what we feel is absolutely necessary and not just because there's money there that we spend it.
Yeah.
So, that's, I just want to make sure that we stay, because that's happened before we get to this point in the year and we say, "Oh, we still have, let's throw this in." Just because it's on a list doesn't mean, you know, I just want to say that. You know, I think, personally, I think it's, you know, if we did get the money, I mean, these lists, this list is great, but I really feel the literacy lessons would be a good, you know, thing to invest in. The furniture, you know, I mean, it's replacement of furniture that's obviously out of, you know, whack. And our district visioning. Those three things I could support putting in, but I really have a hard time stretching beyond that. I don't know what other people are feeling, but-
Well, Marie, could you go to your magic sheet there and clarify the literacy lessons a little bit more?
Why don't I ask Damian to talk about it a little bit?
Oh, okay.
So, literacy lessons is a, this is primarily driven by the professional development related to this. So, when teachers participate in the training that goes along with literacy lessons by the rules that are set forth by the university, which is Ohio State University, they have to work one-on-one with a certain number of students. So, when the teachers are going through that training year and they're pulled into a one-on-one instructional model with a student, that means there's, there is less room for them to service groups of other students. So, the cost that you see is largely to backfill their time, which would be allocated for, you know, regular reading instruction and special ed instruction that they would engage in. So, this is when they go through that training year, there's a need to backfill with some additional staffing to make sure that we're not leaving other kids behind who would be getting supported by those teachers during that professional development year.
So, this would be like a TA in the classroom or another teacher?
No, it would be another teacher.
A reading teacher.
So, I mean, the other thing to keep in mind with literacy lessons, it's very similar to reading recovery, which you've heard about in the past. Literacy lessons is specifically intended to support students with disabilities and/or English language learners. So, we do have some E&amp;L teachers who have gone through the training as well. We have a couple of buildings, Westmere comes to mind and I think Gilderlin right now, do you have a-
We have an E&amp;L.
You have an, you're right. They don't have a special ed literacy lessons trained teacher at GES and Westmere does not either. So, we're really hoping that we can, you know, bring them up to par with the other buildings that have that level of expertise and training to support students with disabilities.
So, what, I know Linwood has, does Altamont also in Pine?
Altamont has a literacy lessons trained teacher and so does Pine Bush as well.
So, this 57,000 would just be for one teacher for either of those schools? They flip a coin or something?
I think it's going to be one at Westmere, we'll have one trained at Westmere and two, really. I think we're going to have one trained at Westmere and then one at Gilderlin. So, it would, again, it would accomplish us not having to remove any services and supports from students while the teachers are going through the training, which is pretty intensive.
So, it's just a training, paying for their training and-
Yeah, I mean, the cost of the training, because we are a certified training site and we have a trainer in-house, we really don't have the heavy expenditure for the training itself. It's really to essentially backfill while those teachers are going through the training because we have to abide by the university requirements for us to officially train them as literacy lessons.
But it's not a full-time teacher, I think, yeah.
No, no.
That's why, I don't know if that's what you were thinking, but when I first looked at it and then I read again, literacy lessons, it's not the teacher.
No, and when we've done it in the past, it's typically been, you know, a partial of a teacher, a part-time person, .4-ish would come in and cover for the special ed teacher who's going through the training for that year.
But this 57,000 would cover both GES and Westmere?
Yes.
Any thoughts on that? Tim?
And this is, this is an approach that absorbs all of the Lucy Cawkins material, right? It's not separate from it?
Well, it's a specialized intervention, so it's not classroom instruction. So, this is specifically for students who are really struggling with reading, so it's an intensive intervention for those students. Little bit different than the Cawkins units.
Okay.
Any other thoughts?
I just have a general question, actually, regarding the budget options that were listed. Gloria made a really good point regarding the whole throwing monies back in and taking monies out. Is it, these options that were put here, I know like with the Capital Project, we had a priority list of priorities ones, two, and three. With our budget, I know that we had similar situation where we were kind of saying, this is really something, we had your proposal as to what is really necessary regarding what we need in the school district after being advised from school heads. So, these options that were listed on this sheet, does that showcase that? Because how did we get these few items here as, can we put these in now as options?
So, if you recall in the March 5th presentation, we were quite close to the ceiling of our tax levy limit. So, we couldn't fit literacy lessons within there. If we could have, it would have been part of the budget. It was not the highest priority, but a very high priority, especially for Westmere and GES. But we just, we ran out of room, essentially. So, that's on there. Tech Valley, I included because we were in the midst of all of those discussions because the families had come in and it was really a list, that was on the list for your consideration. The furniture is included on the list. It is needed. Could they live without it? I think Mike and Mike would probably say, "We really would like that furniture." But we were very careful about equipment in that tight budget, so that's the whole idea. If we have some more resources, that could be something we would include there. You know, the fund balance, I personally will say, it troubles me that we have been using a greater amount of fund balance every year for the last three years because I think the economy is going too slow or worse and I do think we need to have a healthy fund balance to protect us from, you know, what may happen down the road. And then, you know, with the visioning, that wasn't on my original list, that came from the committee, the Communications Committee yesterday. However, I think that process will actually help us make better, more efficient, more cost-effective decisions down the road because it will help us know when to say no because something isn't one of those top two or three goals. So, I think that 40 is a, this is my opinion here, so, is an investment in how we think about our 100-plus million-dollar budgets going forward. So, that's how they're there. You know, everything else that was in the budget that we shared back in March really was what I would call the P1s of our budget development process that started back in October.
I do think that some of, and I don't mean to, I don't want to take up everyone's time by continuously talking, but I do think that some of the things that we do have on here, not only on here, but just in the budget, I don't want to put more work on, on Neil. I know that some private schools and I know that colleges, they have a position that actually does grant research where they seek out grant monies. Is that something that as a district that we should be having? Because a lot of, I'd almost rather pay a 40, $50,000 salary to somebody to seek out grant funds when we can get things like furniture possibly funded or something athletic funded.
The challenge with grant funding is that we have a hard time demonstrating sufficient need. I mean, the first, I see Ben shaking his head, the first category of the eight or 10 things you ever have to write about when you're applying for a grant is demonstrating need. And while we sit around this table and clearly see the need and can justify it, when you compare us to a Schenectady or an Albany or, you know, a more-
Mahanesson right now.
Mahanesson or a rural school, we get low points on that and so, it's very hard to compete. The other thing is, grant funding is drying up. It's not even available for the larger schools and we're seeing that in various places. You know, having said that, I think we do keep our eyes open for various grants that seem to fit our needs and for which we have a, you know, a specific purpose. So, we keep, but we don't have a grant writer on staff. When we find one, you know, Damian's written grants and, you know-
Cliff, Cliff writes.
Cliff has written grants. You know, we've all done some of that kind of on the side. BOSI's has a grant writing service as well. Again, we haven't taken advantage of it for my first reason and that is-
We just don't qualify.
We don't seem to qualify for the kinds of grants that are out there to do that.
Okay.
But we do keep our eyes open. It's not like we wouldn't do it.
Right. I know Cliff has mentioned that he's gotten grants before. I just didn't know if somebody was doing it as their job, like that's their sole job is strictly to, I know we didn't have that. I didn't know that it wasn't really something that we should be looking into because it wouldn't give us what we wanted. Okay.
Paul, if you just want. I, I don't know if Gloria said it or not, but I, the literacy, I think is, would be fabulous if we can get that in. I think the furniture replacement, they're not asking for lounge chairs and everything. They're asking for cafeteria tables by some that are just because things are really in bad repair. And I would like to do, see us do the visioning. Fund balance, I'd like it if we could put some towards keeping the tax levy impact low and I would also like to give money to the fund balance. So, however that might work out, but those would be my three things that I would like to see in there. And if we were to do that, I, it's 102,000 and that would leave us with-
140,000. 140,426.
About 140,426. And so, I guess I would put maybe a little towards the fund balance, but I'd like our community to see too that we are trying to keep things as low as we can, you know. We're not just putting all the money aside for next year, we're trying to recognize their needs and I'm torn on that.
Yeah, because the more we put, take out and put it, if we put in a fund, it's still going to come, it's going to hurt the percentage.
Yeah.
So, if we go with 102 and then we stay under the tax cap far down, it would mean, I think Neil was, we were trying to figure it out before 1.5 as a tax percent.
Percent, yeah.
Which I think respects the community. I agree that the fund balance, we eat away, but I, you know, I was checking with, you know, we are at 4% and it was still at the recommended level. It'd be great if we had more, I agree, but given what the, what the community has been telling us and the stress that's on them, I think-
And this year is going to be especially difficult, as we all know, because of our referendum and the library's referendum and new buses and-
Just a regular budget vote, too?
And the assessments. Yeah, everything's happening, so.
And I don't think, I mean, Neil's explained it and I feel fairly comfortable with it, but I don't think people just look at the amount of what their house is assessed for. Oh, my goodness, this is, their taxes are going up. They are, they are seeing that their taxes are coming down from that. Plus, we just want to respect the, you know-
Everyone's wallet.
Yeah, yeah. Tim, how about you? Are you in favor of the literacy lessons, the visioning and the cafeteria tables?
Are we voting on it?
No, just to get a feel because you'll actually vote next, next Tuesday.
Actually, aren't we adjusting things here?
Yeah, don't we have to make a motion?
No, we're not voting.
We're not doing, there's no voting.
Just discussing. Make the motions next week before we vote.
I would, yeah, I would like to hear, you know, everybody's opinions. It's not easy.
Yeah, I just heard the line, "Know when to say no." And, you know, sadly, I would say no on any other additions. I just really, again, I am really so worried about the may vote, just with everything that was, was mentioned, with everything going on, economy, whether it's local, state, national, you know, there's just a lot of trepidation for me and so, I would be inclined and I hate to say it because everything is so worthwhile, but, and that's the problem. Everything is so worthwhile and it's, you know, it's easy to say yes to it all the time, but I really, I really would say no to adding all of these items to the budget. I don't do it easily, but it's $100,000. Percentage-wise of the budget, that's peanuts, but it's still $100,000 and, you know, I'm trying to figure out how we can ever start chipping away at some costs and show the public that kind of good faith. When you hear people talking about how, you know, there's, there's never a tax decrease, I mean, that does resonate. You know, are the, are those days, do those days have to be gone necessarily? So, that's just, I'm, I'm struggling with that and so, you know, I would, I would not support adding any of these options.
Okay. Ben?
I wouldn't support the literacy lessons. You know, the, the furniture replacements, if you ask kids what they want, this is what they talk about. They talk about water fountains and air conditioning and, and new locker rooms and stuff. You know, out of all the things, I'm like, listen, we're writing the budget. You can tell me whatever you want. And they're like, you know, new, new desks. So, you know, I, I, I am sort of in favor of that one. You know, on the same time, it's a linoleum building with cinder block walls, and we're never going to make it comfortable. But five grand, you know, I don't know. So as far as, you know, fund balance goes, you know, I, I said this a couple meetings ago, you know, there's different kinds of capital. You know, one of them is social capital, you know, respecting the community because, guess what? We got to come back to them next year, too. You know, and you, you know, if you don't respect them, then maybe next year they don't give us any increase. You know, on the other hand, we're not quite at the slowdown yet, you know, and for the economy. And like I've been saying since I joined the board, money becomes more valuable when it's, when there's, when it's scarce, you know. And, you know, we have 4% in our general fund, but that doesn't include all of our other funds. You know, we, we've seen the chart of where we rank against other districts. I mean, they all have 4% in their general fund, but they have a lot more money in those other funds. You know, and so I am, I am concerned about that, you know. The other thing to keep in mind is, you know, two, two other points I have to make. One, the radon thing, it's not like we're getting money, we're just not putting that in the cap, right? You know, and so it's kind of false almost to say, oh, now we have more money. We don't. You know, we're just, it's still increasing the budget if we add this stuff beyond what we presented. And the last piece I'll just say, just for consideration, is our budgets always pass with more than 70% approval. You know, if we wanted to, if we wanted to break the tax cap, you know, it would look, might look bad, but it's not like I would be worried about the budget.
I think this year will be a tough year with all of the referendum and, I, I just, you know...
It would look bad.
And, and the, the assessment, because it's like I said, people look at, oh, my gosh, my house is assessed for so much more, not realizing how much your taxes will come down. They, they see that hard number. They don't see the tax number yet.
Yeah, I, I just, I just like to throw it in there because we focus very hard on the tax cap. You know, sometimes as if it's the goal to reach, and sometimes as if it's the absolute ceiling, and it's, it's really not. So...
I have a question, Neil, about, I, I didn't see it anywhere in reading about the state budget. The tax cap, 2% was made permanent, but it wasn't a 2%, it's still going to be the same?
Right, the...
They didn't make it a 2% tax cap.
Yeah, 2% every year for the CPI indicated, CPI portion of that.
Okay.
It still can be anywhere between zero and 2%. The hope was that it would be 2% every year regardless of the CPI.
Right, so we could plan, okay. I, I never saw anywhere that, what, what they were doing. Could, could they change that in the legisla, I mean, I know they've made it, that it will be law. Can they change it to be that it's 2%, not 2% or...
I think the legislature has that power.
They could have.
They could have, but they didn't.
I was wondering if they can. Yeah. They probably don't want to give...
But they're not going to.
No.
Okay, you have something else?
Yeah, a question for Neil. Per pupil allocations, is that state money, or is that just how you do things? Are we allowed to cut that stuff? And if so, does it have to be proportionally, or...
There's a lot of questions in there.
Tell me about per pupil allocation.
Yes, yes.
Everything you know.
We have kind of a hybrid model. So we get some reimbursement for the state on certain types of expenditures per pupil bases. We also, in this district, and I've been here 15 years and the system was already built, there were a number of expenses identified on a per pupil basis that aren't related to state aid categories as well. So, and I, I think the thinking is sound, is you have changes in, in student populations, and shouldn't the money follow the students? So materials, equipment, supplies, and so on, at, at all levels, elementary, middle school, and high school, we've developed per pupil amounts. So some dollar amount times the number of what your expected enrollment is will drive the dollars in the budget for certain categories. The ones that we get state aid for, library supplies is one of them, computer software is another one. What we're trying to do there, obviously, is we have needs in those areas, is also to maximize the state aid. So we're, we're aligning our per pupil allocation the same way the state does. So if the state says you get six, six dollars and 25 cents a student, we also build the budget using six dollars and 25 cents a student. And then as we go through the course of the year, if we need to transfer money because we're running out of money in one area and, or need some additional expense, what we don't do is we don't touch those areas that are state-aidable. So computer software, we're not going to put that into general supplies because what we'll do is take away the amount of aid that we'll get, and we do have needs in those areas. So we're, we're looking at it from two different angles, both the state side and the equity side within the school district.
And so some places in here, you put in parentheses, state aid, and in some places you put per pupil allocation, you know, for general supplies, for example. Is that consistent? Like if it's not there, it's not per pupil? And...
Yeah, that should be consistent. Might be a couple of codes that, we don't have the wording in the large document that might be per pupil based, but by and large, yes.
What's that?
I do have the answer going back to the other question. I think Tim and Tru, so was on this one a little bit, too, that thirty-nine thousand dollars in the high school 449 code, thirty-seven thousand, two hundred and fifty, that was related to our initial estimate of the cost-sharing change for the school resource officer. The additional twenty-five hundred dollars is related to the school-to-work classes that we have. They go on field trips, and they also have life skill opportunities. So we have another twenty-five hundred dollars there. The two of those add up to thirty-nine thousand dollars, in terms of the overall increase.
Tru, say anything else?
I guess the only thing that I'll say is that I, I agree with what Ben and, and Tim were saying regarding adding monies to the budget. I, I just, I, I don't mind adding a little bit that's necessary. I just, I guess because in going through the budget, the majority of this is personnel. I mean, it's, there's nothing that we can really do about it. It's, the majority of this is personnel. I guess I don't know enough of the day-to-day to know, well, if we're going to add, can we take anything out that's in here? I, I don't know priority-wise, you know, Ben was just mentioning the per pupil allocation with something like textbooks at the elementary schools, we're going up, the, the dollar increase is three hundred and three thousand dollars.
There's a new math program.
I, I get that, too. That's part of that with the new math series, but, and I, I just was throwing that out just because it came up as a large dollar amount. But still, okay, at the middle school, there's textbooks that were an additional ninety thousand dollars. You need books, obviously, we're a school. But we also just have this huge program that we now have with computers and laptops. So I was kind of hoping that this whole, you know, the actual textbook allocation would have gone down and not up because of that. Because it's an increase. It's not that we're, you know, paying what we're paying. It is an increase in what we're paying this year. I don't know enough about every line item to know, okay, can we cut a little bit of this to add a little bit of that? So it's hard for me to look at what we want to add and, and prioritize and know, this is really important. Obviously, literacy lessons is important because we're a school. Anything that we can do to, to better educate our kids at any level is important. You know, I would kindly disagree with Ben regarding the desks and cafeteria tables. It is only five thousand dollars, which is such a minute amount of our budget, but it's replacement of. We currently have them. It's not that the tables are dilapidated and they can't operate any longer. We need to replace tables because they're not tables anymore, and we need to re, we need to replace them that way. So that's what I'm saying. It's, it's hard for me to prioritize what's really essential and what we can do without this year. We have a capital project that we're dealing with as well. So it's hard for me to say what's important and what's not when I don't know every single item that's in here that is something that, well, maybe we can do without this to add that, instead of just, like Gloria was saying, adding and adding and adding. So I, I don't know what the answer is.
I just want to say that I kind of went through line by line the budget to see where we could, you know, maybe cut, you know, a thousand dollars here, a thousand dollars there, based on the last few years of actual spending and stuff. And I only found like twenty-five thousand dollars, you know?
That's what I mean.
So it's not even almost worth doing that, you know? So, given that...
Well, that speaks highly, the way the budget's put together.
Yeah, I was going to say, because, you know, they know what they're doing. People know what they're doing.
Out of a hundred million dollars, so.
And we do...
It does come down to that.
You know, that's why we hire a superintendent who hires the staff to do exactly what we can't do.
Right.
There's no way we can do this.
Yep.
And that's why we hire people that, and we question them and hold them accountable.
But that's what I mean, like when you're adding, adding and adding and adding, that's the first thing that people talk about, is how come we can't ever get a decrease? Why is it always going up every year? And I, I agree. It's hard, it's...
I haven't seen a decrease in my life anywhere, so I don't expect...
That's, you know, I mean, that's... I, I don't know. I think that's just the hard call, is that not only am I a board member, but I am a taxpayer as well. So I, I, I feel your pain. I get it. Yeah, I want my taxes to go down, too.
And I'm on a fixed income, too, so retired, so, yeah.
It's true.
We do feel the pain.
It's true.
Many of us.
So I, I don't, I don't know what the answer is. I just wish that, you know, I had my magic wand to say, yes, we should do this, and no, we shouldn't do that. But everything's important that's in the budget, because obviously, that's what we're here for, is to educate children first and foremost, and to make sure that they're safe while they're being educated.
Well, I, I think what Ben just said, that he went through line by line and could only come up with minor adjustments, is significant, too.
But in having these things be items that we're looking at tonight, just as, hey, what about this, as options to add to the budget, I, I don't know what the answer is, because I'm sure that principals of every school, and I'm sure that students of every school would have their two cents to throw in and say, hey, but I really want new lockers at Westmere. I really want that.
Well, that's why, that's why we have to be vested in the process that we use to do this. I mean, this, this process of budgeting begins again in September, you know, with stage one, and so the staff looks at...
Those are items, yeah.
But that's how it builds, it builds. You don't just go back.
No, I totally understand that.
So Marie's suggestions came from that whole process, but they couldn't get in.
But that's what I'm saying, there's other items, like I know there's other items that principals and students would want that aren't on this list, because this list would be never-ending.
Of course. So you put in what's reasonable, just like in your...
But there's other things that are reasonable, too.
Well, that's why we hire people to make those kinds of...
I, I completely understand what you're saying, and I agree with you. But I'm just saying that's...
And I said we could do it all, but we can't. And that's why we get elected, to get, do that.
I just will say this about our principals and our instructional administrators, the proposals they come to, they are not wishless at all. They have done their homework, they have analyzed the data, and they're very responsible lists. So, kudos to them.
And they also have to deal with the parents and the community.
Yes.
Just as we do.
And the priorities that we have set. We've set safety as a priority. That's going to be looked at as, as, you know, in the academic program, you know, we've set the priorities as the board, and that's what the instructional leaders go back and look at. Okay, this is what they're funding.
I mean, I think, what was it? We were four thousand dollars or four hundred dollars away from the tax levy limit. And so we couldn't even put in the five thousand dollars, which doesn't sound like much out of a hundred million. But even five thousand was, was more, you know, couldn't, couldn't have been included, which is pretty stunning. So I'm glad to see that we have a little bit of room.
Well, the thing that I, I would really advocate for is the literacy lessons. I think one of the things that we've always sort of prided ourselves on in the district is an equivalency of instruction for all the, you know, the elementary schools. And to hear that two of our largest schools don't have a program that's, according to our staff, has been very, very successful, and, you know, the other schools, I would, I would definitely advocate for that fifty-seven thousand. If you don't intervene early in a child's life, reading becomes harder and harder and harder. And I, I think we owe it to the two schools that don't have it to put that in the budget. And you're, you're still going to have monies left for the, you know, the fund balance, which I think is important, you know, in the future. But again, the reason we're here is to educate the kids. And to me, I've always been a, a great fan of reading recovery, and although this isn't the reading recovery program, it seemingly is, is as successful as that one. And I just can't see our, our two largest schools not having, not having access to a literacy coach. So I guess come Tuesday, I'll, I'll, I'll be putting my hand up for that one.
Anything else?
Marie, could you talk about the changes to Italian that you talked about a few weeks ago?
Two weeks ago.
I'm going to refresh my memory.
Does that affect their...
Yeah, some teachers, some students had to take their second.
Thank you for refreshing my foggy memories. So we have, and I believe we've received its resignation, received the resignation of our Italian teacher who is currently assigned to the high school. So we currently have a, a Italian teacher at the middle school. The only way for us to offer two sections of grade six Italian is to have 2.2 FTEs in order to make it happen. So we're going to have to hire a 1.0 FTE for the high school, and another 0.2 to pick up the other section at the middle school. Currently, our new teacher at the middle school is teaching a 1.2, and it's too much. So we had, I think, seventeen or thirteen students who were lottery, lotteryed into their second choice of a language. So we're going to be offering one section of Italian for next year. Italian teachers are about impossible to find. They're with bus drivers.
Where are they all hiding after hanging out?
So Marcia has done a remarkable job of literally scouring programs around the country, looking for individuals who are capable of teaching Italian. And we work on the certification from there.
Put out an S N N. Maybe somebody in the community knows somebody in the community that knows somebody.
So...
You did?
So we're just in a very difficult spot. And the, the young man who came to us, we did a, worked very, very, very hard. And students really liked him a lot, but it's just not what he wants to do.
Yeah.
And, you know, we can't...
Yeah.
...force him. So that's the, that's the challenge with Italian right now. Now, we continue to look, but I don't know, I mean, I just don't know what and who we'll find out there. But we're already recruiting. Our job fair is next week, uh, next week.
Oh, yeah.
And we're actually trying something new. It's something called Handshake, and it actually pulls our postings and sends them out to universities across the country. So we're keeping our fingers crossed.
I have a quick question.
Just as a follow-up about that, earlier this year, we had a concern about German class?
That was two years ago.
It was, um...
It was two Septembers ago, I think.
Yeah.
This year, too, I thought we had a lower...
There's a thing here this year where we weren't sure that we were going to keep a sixth-grade German class.
That was actually last year, where we weren't sure we could run German six. And then we ended up going back to students and asking them if they would reconsider their second option, and we got...
We got enough, that's right.
I mean, not the year we're in, but the year we're in.
It was last year before last.
Last school year.
Last school year. Yeah, I remember that.
It seems like yesterday, but it was two...
Well, we went on the board for, you know, not even... Well, we've only been on the board for, you know, not even a year, so I, I just didn't realize it was that...
Am I not recalling another German?
Are you thinking German five students this year, and just the very low enrollment at the other end?
No, I, I know about that one and how we're letting them finish the pipeline. I just, I remember seeing a report, or a few reports about...
You know, we would've been talking about that last year, this time. Maybe that's why you remember it, because it was touch or go in the budget development process where we were gonna land. So, that's probably why, no, it was two years...
All right, well, I don't know, I don't know why I know this then, but, okay.
No, you're, you're right, Ben. We solved the problem, but we were working on the problem this time last year, and we ended up getting sufficient numbers to run the class. Young people have better memories than...
I guess my follow-up question to the Italian question that Ben asked. If by some miracle, somebody from the community were to step up for a 0.2 position, would we allow those kids to return back to Italian?
It's really a Bill Obe question and the master schedule, so I'm not going to venture into the answer because I have no idea what havoc that could wreak.
It's just that it's such a, a popular language for our community.
Right.
And that if we could do that, I think we should.
Can put it on Bill's radar. He may have a Plan A and Plan B.
I may as everything, too.
Yeah.
When that emerges as an important consideration.
Right. So, we can mention that to him.
But the earlier we identify the person, it would be great.
Right. Yes, it would.
Right. Are we good? If nobody has anything else, I think we have a motion to adjourn. Teresa, Ben's second. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Um, we, we'll get you a copy.
Yeah, I didn't get a copy either. I think that probably was, because I wasn't here.
Here, let me make myself a note. We'll get you a copy right away. And the appendices, too. Okay, I can have your policy tomorrow. And Gloria, business practices is joining me this week, is that? Because...
Barbie did a...